Let's hear it for President Ford, meeting. I pledge allegiance to the trusty Rogers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, trustee Ramsey is not here today. Rogers, trustee Rogers.
President.
Trustee Ramsey.
President.
Trustee Moore not here today, trustee Slaton.
Here.
And trustee Reas.
Here.
Oh, and Mayor Osberry.
Here.
For the form. Yeah, queer. Good evening, family.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord God, how majestic is your name about all the earth and in the earth. We thank you now for this opportunity, this precious time, this moment of deliberation, this moment of pondering on your welfare on behalf of the folks that we serve. We thank you, Lord, that you have not held our sins against us, that you have been merciful. And we thank you that through this process, you have enabled us to serve you as well. Lord, let us hear what you hear, let us see what you see, and let us be humble before you. We ask these things, and the people of God say amen. Any correspondence possible?
Thank you.
No. Any correspondence? Yes, I have one here dated June 11, 2018. Addressed to you, Mayor Osberry. Says, "Dear Honorable Mayor B.L. Osberry, Jr., Village President. I believe Washington..." I'm Beverly, Washington, and retired from Grand Prairie Public Library. My last date is June 29, 2018. I want to extend a sincere thanking for the tax revenue from Hazercrest that has supported GPPLD. I have been a youth service department reference clerk, information specialist at GPPLD for more than 18 years, nine months, and the salary I have received has helped me to lower my debt and see my children through school. Since you have been the mayor of Hazercrest, I have seen some good changes in the community of Hazercrest. Stay strong, keep standing for what is right, and keep working for the benefits of the people and the community of Hazercrest. Thank you for all you do. May God continue to bless you for serving the community for his glory. Sincerely, Mrs. Washington. Thank you, Mayor Washington. Gladly, Mr. Washington, on her retirement from Grand Prairie Library. And thank you for the letter and the kind words. Mayor's report. First, I want to thank everyone for coming out to the Fourth of July fireworks. We did have a little bit of fireworks for about 10 minutes or so. We had rained out. But I'm still excited by all the people that came out. I mean, it threw the rain and the lightning, they all came out themselves, that was really exciting. Those of you who do not know, we are going to have fireworks for the hazelnut festival. Place the fireworks from Fourth of July. So come on out, enjoy Mickey Howard and Tru. Those of you who don't know who Mickey Howard is, I know you know who Tru is. You know, generation. But again, thanks for everybody coming out. At this time, I'd like to honor Deputy Chief Malcolm White for 20 years of service in the village of Hazercrest. I want to thank Deputy Chief for working on... I remember when he first came around here. Yeah, a lot more hair. But he's a good guy, and I appreciate all you've done for the community and you continue to do for the community. Thank you, lovely wife, I used to work with over at South Suburban Hospital. So you guys, you're seeing someone who really put the time in and efforts in to help the village of Hazercrest really grow. Came from when it was a lot smaller, a lot less of Hazercrest, but now we have a lot more of Hazercrest. So I want to thank him for all of what he's done and congratulate him on 20 years and hope we can see another 20 more.
Deputy Chief, you guys say something. I, uh... I don't know. Just after 20... It's actually been 24 years altogether. I started in the neighboring community, Harvey, for four years. I remember when I first started, my grandmother told me, just, she was really worried. And she said, you know, just every day, pray for wisdom. And so that's what I do. And so that's why I've always tried to treat people the way that I want to be treated. And you don't get through 20 years of this type of profession without someone praying for you or without you putting God in your life. I do want to thank my wife and my family for sharing me with you and my extended family, which is in the back of the room. I'm so proud of this police department and the things that we've made and what we've built and established and the future that we have. And I appreciate everyone in this room. Thank you so much to the village board and the citizens of Hazercrest.
Hey, get the picture with the chief there. Get a picture with the chief there.
Hey, before he leaves, Mayor, I just want everybody to know that this is the guy who runs the day-to-day operations in Hazercrest. He does all of that. You know, you're only successful of those that you have in leadership, and he runs stuff. And so, you know, it makes my job that much easier and makes the village run that much smoother, so I truly appreciate that.
Okay, village manager.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, trustees and village... I just want to also, once again, say congratulations. Yes, sir. Oh, correspondence. You can read or just copy them out if you want.
This is not really a proclamation, this is a... Chief, what's your thing?
The Illinois Police Chiefs Association and the NAACP in the state of Illinois had a very historic event a couple of months ago. After the Ferguson concern some years ago, the NAACP and the Illinois Chiefs Association said, "Something's got to be done to help bridge the gap." And over a three-year period, we worked together, had stuff all around the state of Illinois, and it all culminated in 10 shared principles. And the 10 shared principles are 10 shared principles that the Illinois Police Chiefs Association and the NAACP have agreed upon, that these are things that are important between law enforcement and communities of color. And this agreement was signed by the Illinois Chiefs and the NAACP in the same place that Abraham Lincoln gave the speech about the nation divided. So it was very historic, and so what we're doing moving forward is, we'll start here. Once again, this is the first time in the country this has happened. So what the Illinois Chiefs is doing is, we're getting police departments to specifically sign on as being a part of these 10 shared principles. And as chief of Hazercrest, especially with me being on the executive board, I got to step, even if I wasn't, this is just common sense for us to be a part of this. So I submitted our information, and they included us on here as part of the partnership so your town can do this. So, Mayor, we're going to do a formal, a formal thing here at the village meeting, and I'm going to get a big poster made, and we're going to have that framed and put out here for everybody to see that this is how we operate when it comes to our community.
Awesome.
We're going to do a framework with the board of governors who we actually go to these principal at our next meeting, go to these principals, the board of governors, the board...
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's quite right, Mayor. Once again, I just want to say congratulations to Deputy Chief, you know, White. I really appreciate all the support thus far. Also, I just wanted to briefly highlight some of the things that I'm actually very proud of. I had opportunity to be at the senior commission meeting last Friday. It was quite informative and just very supportive. It's a very active and engaged, you know, group of people, so I just really appreciate that. Also, I had kind of a little conference call with our IT heritage because we're starting to map out some of our future needs and some of the things that we need to take care of. Also, just want to also acknowledge Ms. Carolyn and her team. We've been really working on our communication assets. We had a great meeting with the mobile development app, and there's some wonderful upgrades and costs that we're really looking forward to using. And just recently, we closed out our pre-bid, well, our bidding process for our street resurfacing today, so those are some of the things we're putting out there for now.
Which street do we... Hey, I thought it was 22nd Street.
Did you want to speak on this today? Or I could give you an update later.
What, the 10th Street that we identified? I don't have them available, but I can.
Okay.
That's about it for me now.
Thank you. Nothing from legal? Police?
Thanks, Mayor. In addition to the 10 shared principles that I mentioned, we're going to have a formal, do something formal with that. What we also have going on in the police department is, on July 25th, we're going to be having an event at Governor State University, and it's an extension of these shared principles where the cafes that were taking place all around the state of Illinois, we're going to have one in the Chicagoland area for the first time, and it's going to be at Governor State University on July 25th. It's a closed-door session, but it's going to be a working session in order for us to build upon. This is a work, this is a living document. It's not something that's just been printed, it's going to remain the same, it's going to be constantly evolving as the needs change, so we'll be working on that. Secondly, we will be posting the announcement tomorrow for our testing for entry-level police officers. We are short several officers, and we're going to be testing in August for entry-level people who actually need to go to the police academy, and we will have all that information posted in the next couple of days, so keep your eyes open for that. We're getting ready for National Night Out. We have our new community policing officer, Officer Milligan, is doing a tremendous job. And while he's in here, I want him to stand up. Officer Clifton Winters, he didn't want any recognition when he retired. For those of you who know, Officer Winters just recently retired, and he wanted to go off real quietly, so he shouldn't have stayed. He's such a part of this community that I couldn't let this opportunity go by to let him know in front of everyone. I've told him a million times how much he meant to this department and to this village, and we really do thank you, sir, for everything that you've done. Officer Milligan is preparing for National Night Out, so he's getting everything ready for that. He's working also with the Hazel Nut Committee, and we're moving forward. So we got a lot of good things going on in the police department, we're excited about it. Thank you, sir.
Question. Where is National Night Out? It's going to be at the family center this year?
At the family center, yes, Mayor. August 7.
Any other questions? Public workers.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, residents of Hazercrest. For this week, just want to report that last week, we had an introductory meeting with Pace, with myself and the village manager, with our local Pace community liaison, just to talk about how we continue to build a better relationship with the village of Pace. In addition, today, I attended the SSMA Transportation Committee meeting where we learned about the upcoming grant opportunity through the STP program. Also, today, I participated in the meeting with Robertson Engineering where we opened up the bids for the upcoming street resurfacing project. Also, in addition, I'd like to just commend some of my guys' work for the quick work they did to address the water valley that we had off of Village Drive next to the library. I understand that it was a pretty significant leak, but the guys were able to get it and quickly address it. Right now, we have backfilled it, so you may notice that it still needs to be restored back to its original state, but just wanted to thank the guys for their continued work in those unplanned situations because it was on the force, so the guys had to take off their force to come in and help address that particular issue. Thanks.
I'd like to make one comment. Again, I'd like to, you know, show my appreciation for what the public workers did. You know, they came out, they were very quickly, responded very quickly. I had several calls and references what was going on, and I appreciate what you guys did, and I just, you know, publicly want to recognize the public works department for the great job that they did. However, I do have one comment. And I think that, you know, in the future, that whenever we have a water main break, that if there's some kind of way that we can have a, a mobile call to the community that's affected to let them know that there's a water main break, I think that that would be very helpful, you know, in the future. But other than that, I think they did a great job, and I really appreciate the way they got out and had a great performance.
One thing we're going to do is the, as we upgrade our app, we'll be able to send that type of notice out. You can't do a mobile call because it takes, it takes time to do a mobile call. But with the new app that we've been pushing for almost two years now, and it comes, we're talking a little bit about the new app, it has been enhanced, and so we're talking a little bit about that. It will make it easy for them to have.
And question, how is the water main break affecting residents? I haven't experienced that.
In terms, you don't have any water for, for the duration, where you have no water to drink or do other things wash?
And people are not notified, they just discover that they're not getting water?
You don't get any pressure first.
You don't get any pressure. So typically, when there's a water main break, we have to try to isolate it, so to make it, to minimize the impact to residents as much as possible. So initially, first thing needs to take place is we need to identify what lines feeds into that water main so we can isolate it, so therefore, when we do the repairs, it doesn't impact all the, it doesn't impact the residents, so now we can just isolate it so just to where the break had occurred.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Space for services.
Thank you, Mayor, for having a report.
You have a resource?
Thank you, sir, no report today.
Fire department?
I have no report, Mr. President.
I have one question, fire department. Okay. Question I have is, you know, when are we going to start working on our NIM compliance?
We are in that process right now, trustee. Information has been passed out, but if you do not have the information that you need to get your portion accounted, I'd be happy to send that back out.
Leadership Business Relations?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. As the mayor mentioned, we updated our mobile app, and the first thing that you can see in a notification is all our special events, anything going on, you'll get a, you'll get a, you will receive a text message directed to your phone reminding you of an event or a case, like what you're speaking of, trustee Ramsey. You could get, we will send a notification where it goes to anybody who has the mobile app downloaded, and it goes directly to them within a day's time, shortly, you know, it doesn't take long to just send it out through the mobile app, but they have to have it on, okay. Secondly, they're going to have a new thing that they're offering. We're asking our businesses, they could download on our app and get coupons, you know, get discounts and coupons, so if you go on and visit, you'll be able to use a coupon for that business. They have a lot of upgrades, and they're offering to us free of charge, so we are taking advantage of it. Manager Williams encouraged a lot of the upgrades, so we're looking forward to it, it should be effective at the end of this month or the first to next month, okay? And second, I want to, I know we're not meeting for the month of August, or we're just going to meet for the month of August, so I want to make everyone aware that this Saturday, July 14th, is our Beautification of Summer Awards Village-wide, starting at 7:30 a.m. for Beautification Open Lands Commission. Go around to each house and judge, and they're going to place a sign, award sign in your yard that they, they, uh... So they're only giving awards out to yard signs, to platinum, gold, and silver, and the bronze will receive a certificate. They come up here and pick up their certificate. So that's this Saturday on the 14th. August is a busy month for the village of Hazercrest, starting with our hazelnut on the third, fourth, and fifth. There's a lot of activities planned, 303 Basketball, Chicken Mead Cook-Off, Custom Car Show, Bike Giveaway, Brand New Bikes, Pony Rats, Carnival, and the Royal Court, crowning. So we have a lot going on this Hazel Week beginning, first weekend in August, and as the mayor mentioned, featuring Mickey Howard and Tru, and a great, great gospel fest on Sunday and Friday nights, Hazercrest has talent. And we have several Hazercrest residents signed up, so it should be fun also. August 7th, there's National Night Out on Crime. August 15th, we are hosting a career fair here in the senior room. That's from 2:00 to 6:00 on August 15th. August 18th, the Veterans Commission is hosting a staff set in the senior room. And then August 25th, it's the Beautification Open Lands Commission during a full moon social, where they're going to have an ice cream social starting at 6:30. Then they walk through the open lands, which is very, very interesting with the full moon and flashlights. So we have a lot of activities planned for the month of August. Thank you, Mayor.
And I just want to reiterate one thing, the career fairs, fair, not a job fair, it's a career fair with the unions, the unions that are, I mean, corporate unions, electricians, sheet metal workers, they're going to come out and talk about how do you get into the union, how do you get into a union program? So they're going to take you step by step of how you apply to get into a union program, what you're in, process while you're in there, and the, how they actually get you a job once you finish their program. The nearest training program is the carpentry program, that's in also, they overlook it. And so they want to come out and actually explain, because people always ask, you know, how do you get union jobs? How do you become a carpenter? How do you become an electrician? And so it is a different process, so just like a college fair, but it's going to be a union career fair, so to show you and educate people in the process of getting involved in the unions. Everybody doesn't go to college, and so this is our idea, this is a plan for them to actually understand the process if they want to be, become any kind of union-type worker, trades in the trades. So that's going to be a very, very important event, and it's open to all the community. So I did present this to all the mayors in the region, so we're hoping we get some individuals that come out and really get this knowledge, and so while they're, especially while they're in high school, or if they're not in high school, they're looking to know where they want to go as far as their career, this is a great opportunity for them to come out and be involved in that process. So I hope you guys come out on the 15th of August.
Okay, economic development.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to each of you. I would first like to report on the progress of the development projects that we have underway at the village of Hazercrest. We are in the midst of demolishing 17065 Dixie Highway, which was the former South Suburban Hospital, so we have been in conversations and contact with the, with the utilities, entities, and so we're arranging for those utilities to be shut off once we receive a letter. The construction manager and his team is ready to go in and start the demolition process, so we should see that in process before the end of the month for sure, okay? They told us it'd be about seven days or so for us to start getting the letters and then get the utility shut off, so we'll be working through that process. Also, as it relates to 3601 West 183rd, which will be our new municipal center, we have three tenants that are currently in the building, and so we're working to get those tenants moved out and on their way to their new locations. That demolition will also start very soon as well. And as it relates to the demolition process and getting subcontractors ready for the opportunities that we have, as it relates to the projects that we have, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a meeting sometime in August that will tell them what they need to do to comply so that they're eligible to bid on becoming a subcontractor in this whole process. Of course, we want to make sure that our Hazercrest residents have all the information that they need, so if you are a contractor, you can take part in this process, as well as if you have some specialty trade, maybe we can help with some type of apprenticeship with the various unions that will be taking part in the project as well. So we are well underway with that, and more updates will, you know, come as we move forward, but we're moving forward as it relates to that, okay? As it relates to our, the President's Bridge Program, of course, as you know, the President's Bridge Program is underway, where we teach life skills, language arts, math, science, and social studies every day, and along with that, we introduce them to various other opportunities that they may run into along life's path. So July 5th, we had Greek Day, seven different sororities and fraternities were represented on that day. Teachers taught about the, all the aspects of preparing for college and all that it has to offer, with a special emphasis on HBCUs. That was a great day. We had a lot of interest from our youth as it related to HBCUs, attending college, and the sororities and fraternities. So it was a great day, July 5th. July 12th, the students will be attending Adler Planetarium. July 19th, the students will be treated to a day of bowling, pizza, pop fun by our very own trustee Sandra Slaton, who has funded this outing. We want you to know that the children are excited and looking forward to some friendly competition on that day, so they will be bowling at the Tenley Park Bowl on 100, right off of 183rd Street, so we would like to thank our very own trustee for that. And then July the 25th, we will have a career day at the Bridge Program, and we're asking that our village president, the trustees and directors attend so that the students are enlightened about what it is that we do and what takes part in municipal government. So I believe in some cases, it will probably be their first introduction to such, so we're certainly encouraging each of you that can and will attend. We'll give you more information as it relates to time slots and the various things that will take place on that day. And then we will be concluding that program on the 27th with a small graduation, which will give you more information as we get closer to that date as well. And so at this time, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Great report, glad to hear the program is doing well, proud of those kids, and it's exciting, it's something we've had since 2013, we started the program, and it's grown, and I, thank trustee, actually, I didn't meet you too bad. I know you're a roller, so I know you don't care that young. But I want to thank you for asking for that. Thanks so very much for that. At this time, can I get a motion to open the floor for public participation for items on the agenda?
A motion that we open the floor for public participation for items on the agenda only?
Second. A motion by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Reas, to open the public participation for items on the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time, there's something on the agenda that you want to address or speak to, and this is the time to come forward and say something. Okay, can I get a motion to close public participation?
A motion that we close public participation for items on the agenda.
Second. A motion by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Reas, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a short agenda today. First one is trustee Reas.
I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 26, 2018.
Second. A motion by trustee Reas, second by trustee Ramsey. To approve the regular meeting minutes of June 26, 2018. Any discussion on this act? Roll call, please. Roll call, please. Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Rogers?
I move to approve a county's payable number 19-05 dated July 10th, 2018, in the amount of $373,000.154 and one cent.
Second.
Remove our trustee Rogers, second by trustee Ramsey. Approve county's payable number 19-05 dated July 10th, 2018, in the amount of $373,000.154 and one cent. Any discussion on this side? Roll call, please. Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, this time, I can hear a motion to open public participation?
I move that we open for public participation for any items of interest. Second.
Remove our trustee Slaton, second by trustee Ramsey. Open for public participation for any general item, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time, you have something to say? This is the time of public participation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Greg Washington, I reside at 3425 Maple Lane. Um, I'm coming on behalf of the Open Lands Commission. On August 25th, that's gonna be almost our summer super bowl, we are having our Pokemon Go Day, that will be from 4:00 to 6:30 on August 25th. We will be also held, hosting an ice cream social afterwards, and that's also where we do our full moon social, it will continue on until 8 o'clock that evening. Um, posters should be coming out soon, obviously I have to make them, I will continue to make announcements about it, and I will be, hope, participating in a grassroots campaign to make sure the residents of Hazelcrest know about it. Um, also, we would appreciate, um, help from the trustees and other officials just to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did you say Pokemon?
Um, yes, or, actually, last year, we tried to add on a Pokemon Go Day independently, something that the Open Lands will be doing by itself. Uh, we decided to combine it together because not only should this be a day for the youth, but a day for everybody since there's no age discrimination when it comes to it. Um, also, this is an event that's open to all residents for free in Hazelcrest and within the South suburbs.
What time does this start?
Um, the first event starts at 4:00 till 6:00, and it will last till 8 o'clock. Um, also, that'll be including our ice cream social, which ice cream will be given out for free.
Do you have toppings for the ice cream?
Um, that's out of my pay grade, um, plus, I don't want anybody, since, you know, everybody knows where I live, to egg my house, so I don't know. Um, we say if you don't like our toppings, bring your own, so.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Anyone else?
Good evening, boys. How you doing? Commissioner Chris Cole, I'm here on behalf of the Park, Hazelcrest Park District, and I have some, uh, park district news. Tomorrow is our first music in the park, it's gonna be, uh, right by the park district building, it starts at 6:45, uh, so please remember to bring your own lawn chairs if you do come out, along with your own, uh, picnic baskets, food, uh, we will provide the music, though, absolutely free. Um, this is also the same week as our monthly meeting, which is, uh, this Thursday, um, at 7:00 p.m. at the park district at the community center, um, at 2600 West 171st Street. Um, also, this Saturday is our youth fishing derby, which begins at 8:00 in the morning at Lake Owens. It's for, I believe, ages five to seventeen, for, uh, all youth, it's absolutely free, come out, we're gonna teach you how to fish. I believe you need to bring your own rod, um, but we are gonna, uh, try to teach you how to fish, or come out and show us something, cause I don't, I could certainly learn something too. Um, so that's, um, also, um, this first music in the park, sorry for jumping around, it's, uh, it's an all-white park, so, uh, hopefully this isn't the first time you guys heard that, cause that's tomorrow, that's for tomorrow's event only, um, so please find your own white or, or purchase something. Uh, we will all be in white for tomorrow's event, for, um, the next three Wednesdays. After that, it's, it's our, um, our next three dates, so I believe that's July 18th, July 25th, and August 1st, and that goes, so that runs smoothly right into Hazelnut, which is, uh, that following weekend after the last day.
All right, any other color, I want you to know about the rest.
No, no, just the first, yeah, just the first day, um, it's all white, so, as far as I'm aware, so, all right?
People who don't know where Lake Owens is?
Lake Owens, okay, so that's, that's actually over here, um, that's right around, I'm sorry.
Right around the village hall.
Yeah, right around the village hall, so, anybody that knows where our basketball courts and tennis courts is at, uh, that's, that's where Lake Owens is. If, uh, you need further assistance with that, you can call the park district, uh, anytime this week, and, uh, call and ask for, well, actually, anybody in the front desk should be able to tell you where that's at, uh, but Ron Jones, our athletic supervisor, is, uh, over at the event, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close public participation?
I move that we close public participation.
Thank you.
Remove by trustee Reyes, second by trustee Slaton, to close public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank everyone for coming out. Also, tomorrow, uh, at Oak Forest Hospital, they are going to be discussing the future of, uh, Oak Forest Hospital, it starts at 5, 6 o'clock tomorrow, uh, so, uh, they're gonna be talking about the future of Oak Forest Hospital, it's open for anyone to come by, to get insight, uh, most of the elected officials from the area will be there, uh, they're talking about the closing, what they're gonna do, what they close, and ask for input, uh, if they do close. Even though I say it's open for elected officials, it's also open for regular citizens, about what's gonna happen with Oak Forest Hospital, so I want everyone to be aware of that. Can I get, and I want to thank everyone for coming out, appreciate your input, and again, would thank, uh, Deputy Chief Robert White, who's 20 years in service, uh, it's always great to have someone who's been here for a while, and, and that history that they bring. Now, I get motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Say.
Remove by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Rogers. We adjourn from the regular meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.